All right. I'm gonna open this meeting of the Nottingham Board of Selectmen for Monday, December 9th, 2019. And before we begin, will you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And also, before we start, I'd like to thank everyone that came out to the holiday parade this weekend. It was fun. I think everybody had a good time.
They said you threw candy at them. She was throwing candy at them.
Just my son.
(laughing).
First up, manifests. We have manifests?
Make a motion, we approve the accounts payable manifests of December 2nd, 2019, and payroll manifests of December 3rd, 2019.
Second? You have a motion and a second, all in favor? unanimous. All right, next up, minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of 11:25 as amended.
Second?
I mean, 11:26.
Says here, 11:25.
I think it was a typo.
Mine says 11:26.
Okay, so...
Oh.
Yeah, wasn't one of those a Tuesday? Could that be why?
I was just looking at the agenda.
Yeah, the agenda's done on autopilot, so it would've missed that Monday to Tuesday switch.
Okay, so it was 11:25?
So is the date correct?
25, you're right.
Okay.
It was 25? Did you have a meeting on Tuesday, Chris?
Yeah, it was 26.
Yeah, 26 is correct.
Oh, the agenda says 26.
That worked?
The agenda says 26, yeah.
But that was a Tuesday. Correct.
But we did have a Tuesday meeting. That was an off-schedule meeting. Go ahead, Ben.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as amended as 11:26, 2019.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor? unanimous.
What are the changes?
The date.
(laughing).
And what about the other two? The 18th, November 18th and November 4th?
I'd like them done separately, please. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of 11:18, 2019.
I don't see that anywhere. They're not in here.
They were in the email Kelly sent on Thursday, December 5th.
Where's this month gone? Can't open it. You said the 18th, right?
Yep.
Do we get a second for the 18th? I'll second that. You have a motion and a second, all in favor? I'm abstaining. And then, November 4th?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of November 4th, 2019. Do I have a second?
No second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Lauren, I'm gonna abstain.
All right. Action items from last meeting. Just to continue working on town road standards, which is on our agenda tonight. All right. Reports from assigned boards and committees. Budget?
I was at the last budget meeting, and we went over the town's budget, which is everything we saw at the meeting before. A couple suggestions made, and they are going to do a review this Thursday of it, and then get back to Chris with the changes that they found.
They actually canceled that.
Okay, then, so...
What were the... What were the suggestions that they made?
We didn't get any feedback.
We had discussion.
Some of the... Clarifying some narrative stuff, but nothing quantitative.
And they were gonna take a longer time to review it to go over, so they could come up with more questions.
Okay.
This Thursday's meeting?
We were so good, the budget committee doesn't feel the need to meet on it.
All righty, planning board?
Planning board, meeting Wednesday.
There wasn't a meeting, sorry.
They're going to meet Wednesday. CIP?
Oh, CIP. Chris has pulled everything together. The committee is meeting next Tuesday, the 17th, at 6:30 in Conference Room 2.
Okay. 300th?
I don't know. Wasn't there. I don't know if they got a meeting. When's the last meeting? I don't know, I wasn't at the...
We have them coming up, that's in a couple weeks.
Couple weeks?
Well, he did well, Chris.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was selling ornaments, right?
Yes.
Good.
And he was very successful, and thank you, your office, for having them available there.
Okay. And Marston? Anything new in Marston?
Well, given that it's snow-covered, it's... We're done for the season.
Okay.
The one, you know, message for folks is that it is, you know, open. People wanna go out and, you know, walk in the snow or a snowshoe or something like that, and it's fine to go in the back part of the property, but the request is to try and stay off of the front where the fields are. But, yeah, if you look on, I started a Facebook page for Marston, you'll see some pictures out there, and we're using it to actively, you know, kinda keep interest up and hopefully continue to drive for sponsorships.
Cool.
I do have one quick question. I took a ride up there Thanksgiving. There's pretty extensive erosion from the rain service we have, I mean, significant.
Where is it?
Comes, the erosion line comes out of that gravel parking lot, goes down through it, didn't even go through the culverts, and it's eroded significantly. Sections would be south, I think, of the ball fields, there's also erosion coming off the ball fields, so there's some pretty significant erosion out there, and some of it has gone down into the wetlands. Most of the erosion is going into the retention pond, but there is significant erosion and sand buildup in the retention pond, too.
Okay. Take a look at that.
Thank you. Thanks. All right. Is that in on Marston?
Yep.
All right. Town administrator report?
Just a few things. You mentioned the parade, we could turn out for the craft thing in here afterward, too. It's coming up on Town Report Time. One of the things the board does is often dedicates the book to somebody, dedicates the report to somebody. If you have any thoughts on that, we kinda do that off the record, so it's a bit of a surprise. So if you have any thoughts, throw them my way. Also, cover photo, we're still looking for a cover photo, so anybody that's got something interesting, send it our way. The Secretary of State has set the Presidential Primacy for February 11th, which is the date we'd all been planning on, but it's now official, so you can put that in ink in your calendar. You were originally gonna visit with the school board at last Monday's meeting that was canceled and pushed to tonight. School board's doing something else tonight, so they're coming next week, which is back to your regular schedule. I sent you something for them on impact fees. I suspect they're gonna wanna talk about the school project generally, space needs generally, but that specifically was on their list. And lastly, Police Lieutenant Brian Spagna has started the paperwork and announced that he's gonna retire in January, so he'll be with us through the end of January after. I think it's 22 years on the force?
What's his name, Chris?
Brian Spagna.
Has he spent all 22 here?
Yep.
So we're gonna have a proper send-off?
Yeah, I've talked to Gunner about what that's gonna look like, but I'm sure there'll be something.
Lack all that?
Yep. And that's all I got.
What about these other things that need signatures?
Those both come up... Oh, the... That is on the agenda, the one on your left hand, and the second thing is an appointment application for the Conservation Commission, which I think you got electronically. Your Conservation Commission has recommended it. Sometimes you ask to meet with new candidates for boards and committees, and sometimes you just take the recommendation of the subject and body.
Wanna look at the letter?
I've already...
Oh, you already saw it?
Yeah.
Anybody wanna look at the letter from the applicant?
It's the same one we got on our email, right?
Yeah.
Is it? Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, well, do we wanna meet with the person, or are we comfortable voting on it?
How comfortable voting on it?
He wants to do it, we can do it.
What do you think?
Sure.
We need a motion on this? All right, I will take a motion, then. You gonna read it off of that, or...
I make a motion, we appoint Jonathan Ryberg to the Conservation Committee.
I'll second that. You have a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. Do we need to sign this, or...
No.
And this other thing for Rec Department, I don't see it on the agenda.
That's the Marston property grant.
Oh, okay.
Do you wanna jump ahead and get that?
Do it, yeah.
Let's jump ahead and get that.
So the... We just finished a grant application for Marston through State of New Hampshire, federal money. One of the things that we have to do is get the governing bodies blessing to apply for the funds and enter into any contracts that we may or may not get as a recipient of a grant. This particular grant was focused on really finishing touches of Phase 1, the pavilion, and some of the fencing, and lesser structures around the ball fields. Those are the big-ticket pieces. It's something in the neighborhood of $75,000 bucks. It's got matching requirements, so it would be, if we did win the grant process, we'd have some fundraising to do. Not $75,000, but some fraction of that.
But that can be through volunteer hours as well, correct?
Yes, if we built all that in, there's still a cash need on top of the volunteer hours, so it's... I guess it's probably achievable, this particular grant, this is a big one, this is a multimillion-dollar thing statewide. Our project fits pretty well within what they typically do.
But it's also an up to 75. So if we were able to match, like, $30,000 of it with labor, we could go to that amount, right? They would match that amount.
Yes.
It's not an all-or-nothing.
Right, it's not all or nothing.
Yeah.
It's a reimbursement thing, so you can fall short if you have to. Our pieces and parts, you know, you can't build part of a pavilion, so we'd have to know. This particular one, what we're asking you to do is authorize Courtney, the Parks and Recreation Director, to sign that stuff, but the restrictions that could come along with this could be... They're pretty hearty, they're federal, it's federal money, so we'd be possibly encumbering the whole property pretty much forever, so we're not gonna actually execute any contracts without coming back to you and looking into that more. You'll see the contract again before, if we win the grant and get that far, we'll be back to you again with a contract to look at, but...
So this is an authorization to pursue...
This is an authorization to do more than we actually will. To apply for the grant, we have to have this piece of paper signed, just to even get in the door.
Okay.
But I'm telling you that we won't go that far, because there's more to it, so we're gonna wanna study those restrictions that come along with it.
Okay.
That's probably a February/March award timeline, something like that.
Yep.
And so, this is just a condition of getting in the door with that grant. It's a, you know, five binders full of noise that we have to send in, so... In, while we're on it, related news. We were awarded a Trails Grant from Marston. That, however, comes with some other restrictions that, you may recall, we did some archaeological work the last time around. The archaeological work that would be required for the Trails Grant is pretty substantial, it may actually make the grant not worth accepting, because the archaeological work is so expensive, so we're still trying to figure out if we can finagle that, but again, state money that comes with lots of strings.
What was the value on that?
The cash value is, you know, $12,000 or $15,000 or something like that. We've got a Service Corps group lined up to do most of the work.
Yep.
They're not free, and that's what's most of what we would be paying for, but it could be that the archaeological work just makes it not work, and we have to find another way to make that trail, so... Anyway, that's a tangent. What I'm asking you to do there is just to get us in the door on the bigger grant.
All right, do you need a... Do we need to vote on that, or...
Yep.
Okay. All right, well, I will take them. Motion.
I'll make a motion that we authorize Courtney Darrow, Parks and Recreation Director, to apply for and enter into contracts related to the State of New Hampshire Land and Water Conservation Fund. I just need to pause for a second. This says "enter into contracts," but we just, I thought we just said that...
We need to present this form...
Saying that she has that authorization.
In order to apply.
Okay, fine.
And I'm telling you, we're actually gonna do that without coming back.
Okay. I make a motion that the town of Nottingham authorizes Courtney Darrow, Parks and Recreation Director, to apply for and into contracts related to the State of New Hampshire Land and Water Conservation Fund Local Assistance Program.
We have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor? unanimous. Is that all you had, Chris?
Yes.
Okay. All right, next up, general business, sale of town property. So how do we act on this, Chris? Do we have to, like, vote on each one, or...
You don't have to do anything, but if you are not interested in any of the, or if there's bids that you are not interested in accepting, or perhaps counter-offering on, or anything else, I have deposits in hand that I'd like to get back to the bidders, so if you are comfortable acting on these tonight, you can. If not, you can tell me which ones to...
Do you need motions on these?
Yeah, there's a, in the thing I sent you, there's a proposed motion which basically just tells me to keep moving. You will have a, if you want to accept any of these, I'll have deeds for you as we get further along in the process, but...
So I... So I... Should we treat them all individually, or...
Yes.
Okay. Okay. 'Cause I... All right, so I'll start with, I'll recommend, I'll make a motion that we recommend the bid for, or make a motion that we accept the bid for Map 1 Lots 117 and 18, Water Street, combined assessed value of $78.7, bid $1,000.
That's enough.
Okay.
Discussion?
What's that? Yes, I did, I did the second one.
Do I have a second?
Second and then discussion.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion?
It's a half, it's .53 acres for those two lots combined, for $1,000. I know we wanna get them off the books, whatever, but $1,000?
Yeah, let's give it...
Is it $78,000? I mean... He wants to, he's gonna put, make it so he can build a house on it?
Is it a buildable lot?
What, a half acre? Sure, you could probably get your clearances on that.
Yeah, no.
There are lots of record, there are old lots. Setbacks for only 20 feet.
30,000 contiguous feet and half...
Again, you can meet state setbacks for all this stuff. It's not like a brand-new building lot. I mean, they meet all the setbacks now for lots that are building on subdivisions now that are .8, you know, I mean, not that much bigger.
It does say if the bid was approved, the subsequent lot would still be undersized for home construction.
It doesn't guarantee that. A half acre.
I don't feel comfortable letting it go at $1,000.
Undersized by zoning, that's what that...
Make a second, and we'll have discussion.
Okay. I don't feel comfortable with $1,000, I think that's...
Well, assuming we accepted the bid, those, these little lots would be lumped in by whatever process, combined with the abutting lot, to make a larger lot, right? And would that combined lot size be big enough for a single home?
Let me see. I don't, I don't know. I'll have to look at the map, can you guys give me a minute?
How much interest has there been in that property? How long have we held it, and how much interest has there been?
There's two different parcels there. One, we've held for three or four years, one for forever, I think. There's not a lot of record on it from memory.
This is the first time that...
I mean, the guy did say, sorry, the guy did say he was going to merge him with his existing Map 1, 131, which is nice, 'cause it's gonna be a big lot, but I think he's basically, he's in the position to steal it from the town.
Right.
And I don't mind paying it. I mean, again, it's no use to us, but I think a $500 or $1,000 is, I mean, we could be nice and generous at a better number, but $1,000 is literally giving it away.
Yeah, but if we've held it for four years, one for four years, and the other one...
Yeah, but this is the first time we've actually put it up for bid, isn't it?
One of them, yeah. The other, yeah, the other one I...
First time as a combined lot.
Yes.
That should add more value.
Yeah, and you put it up as a combined lot, ask anybody, think, you know, a half-acre lot, even if it's in a...
Well, what's that lot down by where you are, and it's up for sale? What's that, 66?
90.
90?
Oh, the other one next to you right there, that's on this one next to me?
Yeah.
Yeah, that one's 88.
Right. But if we reject this, and those two lots stay as they are, one, what are we gonna do? What's the town gonna do with them?
We just put them up for sale again?
But they've been for sale for a while. Nobody's biting. If the abutter can get that off of our hands and add it into the volume of his taxable property, why don't we just get it off our hands?
Yeah, I think, I think the problem, though, is the, you know, $1,000 for, you know, say $80,000 piece of property, it is just giving it away. I think we oughta recommend that the, for the submitting, the bid, come back with another bid.
We should have a reserve amount.
No different than any other...
No different than any other auction, we have a reserve amount. If it doesn't meet it, it doesn't go forward. Do you agree?
Yeah. Because, you know, again, now I'm just gonna, if you go to look at the map one lot, ninety-one Rogers Place, I mean, that lot is point zero-five, and he's offering two hundred. I mean, I don't know why we're rejecting that bid, I'd take that one before I'd take the thousand-dollar one. Cause I mean, that lot's literally only twenty-five feet wide, I mean, you can't do nothing with it.
Suitable for a small home.
Lot, lot one ninety-one.
That's what it says.
Yeah, your, your small house would have to be like five feet wide.
Maybe a camper.
You'd actually get exceptions for everything, for every single board, you wouldn't have the space for the well, the setback.
Right, but the, the bid on the Rogie Place lot is condition on the board declaring it suitable for a small home, which isn't within our authority, so that's, that's a non-starter. That would be the term, that's the.
Well, he owns the lot right next to it. The guy who's making the bid on it owns the property right next to it. If he wants it for two hundred bucks, he wants to merge it with that lot.
Yeah, but he's putting conditions on it.
Right, again.
And we can't.
Without conditions, I'd reject it. Again, I'm just saying.
We gotta reject it, cause it's got conditions on it.
Again.
Yeah.
But I'm just showing.
He's asking the board to do something that's not legally within its authority, so we can't, we can't even entertain it.
Okay. So where are we at with lots one seventeen and one eighteen?
We have a motion on the table, and we have a second.
And a second. Anything you want to add to the?
No, I, I put a motion out, I think it's time for a vote.
Yep. All right, well, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of.
I just want to make one more comment, before we vote on it. I don't think we're doing a due diligence to the town to ensure we're getting the proper amount of money for a property that's gonna be merged. Eighty thousand, it said it's being valued at, and we're gonna let it go for a thousand? We owe it to the town to ensure we get. And that's why I, I made the recommendation going forward, anytime we put a piece of property up for sale, we should have a reserve amount.
Right, but, I mean, look at the notes, that, that the assessments seem to be unreasonably high, given the lot sizes.
Look where it's at.
I, I'm actually not familiar with that street, so. What are those lots shaped like? Are they like slivers, or are they?
Uh, one's a.
One's a square, one's an L.
Parallelogram, for lack of a better word, and one's a kinda L-shaped.
And by themselves?
Merge together, they're, they're a hundred by seventy-five foot rhombus.
So by themselves, not usable for anything, but lumped into the bigger, into the abutter's lot?
Yeah, our intention with this, and we, we talked about this this summer, with the merger requirement, that's a condition that we put on the sale, because we, we want to get rid of these little shreds of, of unbilled, essentially unbuiltable parcels that are of no use to the town, and.
Right.
So we've, and in this specific neighborhood, we've done this twice now, consolidating small lots into bigger ones. So that was the intent, was to make a, was to make a bigger lot, and get rid of the little, tiny little unbuiltable by current zoning treads, so. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah.
But the belief is that even with the merger, it's still undersized for?
By, by zoning, it is. I don't, I don't know how viable it is, as if you, if you look at the merged collection of all of them, the, the two that are offered for sale right now, and the one that they would be merged with, which is one thirty-three, the whole thing is a little less than an acre, you know. Size-wise, you could fit something in there, terrain-wise, I don't know if you could. I, I, I'm not an expert on that, but it's on a hill, septic might be tough, but I, I don't know.
Well, regardless of what they do with it, right now, it's not doing anything for the town.
No. No, it could, it could be in use by somebody, I haven't been out there in a while, but it could be, you know, somebody could be parking their boat on it for all I know, I don't know.
Logging it or something.
No, no, it's not big enough for that, but it's pretty steep right at the intersection of that Union and Water there, so it's not really usable at that, right at that intersection. There's a garage on the other parcel on one thirty-three that's up the hill. Now.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but I don't think that this bid, you know, relative to similar types of things in the past, is way out of line.
It's not too dissimilar, the lot one thirty-three, the, the abutting, the one that abuts, the two that we're talking about right now, that is the result of this process three or four years ago.
Yeah.
It was, it's already been mashed together, to, you know, two or three smaller ones that, we had one of, I believe. Across the street, we did the same thing to get a, a well on a matching house property. So we've, we've been doing this around here for a few years now.
And were the bids prices kind of in the same area?
Yes, for this, for the ones that made up one thirty-three, they were in that, in that same ballpark, yeah.
Cause we don't make money off of these. But when we do these sales, we don't make money off of it. It's, it's for the purposes of getting it back on the tax.
Yeah, so in this, in cases like this, I think your, your primary motivation is probably get it back on the tax rolls, because the town's never gonna do anything with it.
Right.
So it's just a value proposition to you now, is, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm thinking, I think that's more valuable to us, getting it back on the tax rolls. I mean, yeah, it, it does seem a little painful letting it go for a thousand dollars, but this property's not doing anything for us now.
For some vote.
It's just an unproductive burden, that's, that's the way I see it.
It's no burden, it doesn't cost us anything.
Well, I mean, just, you know.
Sitting there doing nothing.
It's sitting there doing nothing. So. All right, well, if there's no more discussion, we have a motion and a second, and the motion was to accept, correct? All right, so all in favor of the motion to accept the bid on the Water Street lots, all in favor? All opposed? All right. Did not pass.
So what's the direction to, Chris, given that?
So I would say, get in touch with the bidder, and tell them that the board did not feel that, that the, the bid that was presented was adequate.
Will do.
I did the first one.
Well, since you made it clear on it, I'll, I'll do the second one. I vote we reject the map one lot ninety-one Rogers Place, assessed value of nineteen-hundred dollars for the bid of two hundred dollars, based on the fact of the conditions put on by the buyer.
Second. Any discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of rejecting the bid? Unanimous?
I recommend to accept the bid for map thirteen, lot twelve, for the bid for thirty-one thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second.
What was it, to accept?
To accept.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion?
Well, this one seems to be a viable house lot, which is not the case with the previous ones. So if it's a viable house, house lot with an assessed value of sixty-nine-nine, the bid is half of that.
Less than that.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. So if we were concerned in the previous case about somebody getting a lot that they could build on, then, and that was questionable.
Say we're a lot closer on that number, though?
Yes, yes. I feel more comfortable with this one than I did the other one.
Has it been for sale this whole time, Chris?
This is the lot that we took, the old house there that was condemned, that was taken down.
Yep.
And now it's, I've driven by it, it's just a clean, regular lot sitting there.
Yeah, we, we offered it.
Twenty sixteen, it says.
Two years ago, did I tell you?
Twenty sixteen.
Yeah, we rejected a thirty-three thousand dollar bid.
We offered it through a similar process in twenty sixteen, board did not accept the high bid at that time, and we just, when you say for sale, this is just a, we just, we post these things, we did this two months ago now, or whatever it is. It's not for sale in the, you know, anybody can walk up and buy it, in a sense, it's, we've just made it available through this bid process.
Can we put it in that?
Yeah, we could, we could, we could list it, we could auction it, we could, you know, hand it over to an auctioneer, we could, and you pay for that privilege, of course, but it's.
But it's just that much longer before it gets back on the tax rolls?
Well, it's just vacant land, if it was a house lot, it'd be worth even more. Making a lot doesn't pay too much to our tax thing, so it gets off our books, but that's pretty much the only benefit I can find.
Right, but it's not giving us anything right now.
Well, just between me and I, I'd like to see the thing, at least somebody making a bid on a town property, paying at least fifty percent of what the assessed value is. Cause the assessed value is on properties right now, on this one here, it's sixty-nine thousand for a two-acre lot, we have a reassessment coming around just next year.
It's not two acres. One point three.
Okay, sorry.
It's got road frontage on two roads. I don't know if that's a benefit or a harm.
What do you think, Tyler?
I, I, again, the bid is more of what I would think somebody would bid. Again, it's probably not all we want, but it's a, it's a decent bid compared to the other two. I may, I say we approve it.
What was the, what was the bid?
Thirty-one thousand eight hundred.
I say we, it's almost fifty percent, I feel more comfortable with this one than the other two.
If, if we rejected it, what would we do next?
Can we talk to a realtor and put it up for sale?
Yeah, you could, you can, you can sit on it, you can offer it through any number of listing things you need, you end up giving away five or six percent, or whatever that is, you can auction it.
But it could feasibly be more than what the bidding price.
Sure, yeah, I.
I mean, is that a risk we want to take? Or do you want to just let it go?
I say let it go. As long as the board understands that we were concerned about a house being built on the other lot that wasn't a viable lot, but this is.
This, this had one, it's still undersized by zoning, so it's, yeah, having had one before.
Yeah.
Makes it a little, it's different, but not.
Makes it easier to build on it.
It's, it faces the same zoning restrictions.
Okay.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor of accepting the bid for map thirteen, lot twelve, Freeman Hall Road? All in favor? All opposed? Four to one, it's approved. Those were the only three we had to act on tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
All right. Next up, class five road standards. All right, so you had some stuff in our folder, Chris.
So I had to leave your last meeting, where I think you left off saying that you were going to continue working on the, using the engineer's suggested standards as a, as a basis for coming to a policy that would be a pathway for some private roads to become class five roads. Is that how you, was that your consensus at the end of the last meeting?
We decided, the board decided to table the discussion around a standard for town roads.
Class five roads, yep.
And then focus on this instead.
Okay, and then ancillary to that, you said you need a little more guidance on the technical side?
Yes, yep.
Which is what this little doodle is here. I, I think I can translate some of it to English for you, having chatted with the engineer. So that's what this is. And then second, that I stuck in your folder is just some historical stuff that we don't need to get into by, I wanted to put it in front of you to remind you where we all, where we started on this whole issue, cause I know you've been struggling to figure out what to focus on, and.
Struggling?
The, the three original questions that, that I posed to you still remain, and what you're working on doesn't have anything, doesn't relate to those three questions, so I just put that in front of you.
Okay. Can we start by going through some of the technical definitions?
Yes.
Okay. So stop, stopping site distance. So if we look at the diagram, so it has to do with crests, not curves, is that correct? The way that this is shown here?
That's how I.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong one, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one, okay.
Yeah, all of, all of these, most of these physical specifications are, in this section, relate to how far you can see and how much time you have to stop. That's the purpose of all of them, is how far ahead of you at twenty miles an hour, you need a certain amount of space in order to stop when you see something in the road. So the, the curve radius, there's, there's math behind that, this is how far you can see around a corner, at, at the speeds that, you know, at twenty miles an hour, the K-values are about crests and dips, and the, not so much the grade, the grade isn't so much about site distances, but everything else is about how far you can see.
Okay, so on this, on the stopping site distance, what does that mean on a curve? Like, even take like Freeman Hall, where you've got the big curve there.
I just noticed that we have a former engineer in the room, maybe he can help me better than, stopping site distance is.
Sure, but it has to do with the radius of the curve and the width of the road determines how much you can see around the corner. And that curve on Freeman Hall Road is tough.
Yeah.
I know a little twenty around that, by the list.
Okay.
So the numbers presented on that hypothetical gravel road standard that they made for us, that would be what they consider the absolute minimum, minimum safe values that we could adopt, is that?
The, they come from ASHTO, I don't know the acronym, but ASHTO is a road safety design professional standard, driven by traffic volume, traffic speed, those are, those are the two big ones, and the road surface, those are, those are the three big ones that will set the rest of these values. I think it's, I think it's safe for me, as a non-engineer, to say. I think it's safe for me as a non-engineer to say that, but more traffic, you want more room to pass, you know, back and, you're more likely to have passing cars in opposite directions, you need, you need, you know, you need different math with higher volumes. Higher speeds, you need more time to see, you know, so those, those are the three big underlying variables.
So, just not debating the number, but just if we said a stopping sight distance of ninety feet, what is, what does that mean in terms of the curve? Does that mean it's a longer, I'm sorry, you know, like a wider, more gradual curve versus a sharper curve, or what does that mean essentially?
It means that wherever you are on the road, you can see at least ninety feet.
Of road?
Yeah.
Not necessarily to the other side of the, end of the curve, but at least ninety feet in front of you?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Ninety feet of linear road path, not ninety feet from point A to point B. So around a corner, it's the ninety feet around the corner, not ninety feet from.
No, it's line of sight.
It's line, okay.
It's ninety feet line of sight?
Correct.
Whether you're halfway through the curve or all the way through the curve?
Right, you need to be able to see ninety feet ahead of you.
Okay.
So you either need to widen the road or make the radius larger. One, one or the other or both, so you can see ninety feet ahead.
Ninety, ninety feet of your travel distance in front of you.
Correct.
Right, because it has to do with your stopping distance. So it is ninety linear feet around the corner. Right, okay, yeah.
You're not going to see around the whole corner if it's longer than ninety feet. That would mean no.
See to the point.
That would mean.
Do you guys have a whiteboard?
Ninety, if you can travel ninety feet, if you can travel ninety feet and see that point.
White pad, white, white, Mike, white, white pad behind there.
There's a flip chart.
Flip chart.
Do you want me to answer?
I do, actually, if you don't mind.
No, I don't mind, I do it all day.
I'm gonna get that.
I didn't, I brought a pen, so I don't have a marker.
I got a marker.
And which way should I face to see your sign?
Camera's not going to see it.
There's a marker right there.
All right, so. You guys all see it?
Yep.
Do you want the middle line?
That's okay.
So if you're here, right? You need to be able to see, like Chris is saying, ninety feet. Right, so you need to be able to see, like there, they can't see that ninety feet. Right, so this roadway needs to be wider so that that line of sight to that X.
I see. So you, so you can widen the road?
I can widen the road or I can make the curve wider so you can see.
Or you can, or you can clear the inside of the corner.
Yeah.
You don't, the road, the road width doesn't necessarily have to be that wide.
Oh, so if there's, like, if there's no trees and stuff like that in the middle, you can still see, I got it, okay.
Right? Clear underbrush.
Yep.
And generally, if you read A Hard Road to Travel, it talks about all this stuff, and it talks about right-of-way is generally much wider than any roadway that you actually build. You know, your roadway is your roadway surface, your drainage ditches, and any other. So in this case, if you had a tight corner and you needed to be able to see around that corner, you'd have to keep this underbrush cleared up on a regular basis, so that you have that ninety foot surface.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We might need you again.
That's fine, I'm here.
Am I the only one with questions on this? Okay, K-value.
Questions, anybody?
You guys all get K-value and longitudinal? Okay, then. Mike, for my benefit. K-value, the horizontal distance along which a one percent change in grade occurs on the vertical curve.
So it's, it's like that?
Yep.
Put now in the up-down dimension instead of the left-right dimension.
So the curve goes up and around?
Right, up and over.
Is it still a curve or it's just up and over?
Up and over, it's a curve, now, but now the curve is up-down instead of left-right, like I drew here.
Okay, so when this, again, not the numbers, but it says, vertical curve K-value, five crest curves, seventeen sag curves. You guys all know what that means?
Crest is up and sag is down.
Yep.
Okay, so why?
Sag is a gully in the road and a.
Okay, yeah, yeah, but what is, over what distance is it, fives ups and seventeen downs?
The value is not a distance.
Okay, but if you're saying, if you're quantifying.
Related to a distance, but it's.
Okay, well, how do you, if you're saying five crest curves is five up? Is that five up, or is it five up, or?
No, it's, it's. I, I can't, I can't do the math for you.
I think it refers to a table value?
It's a, it's all from this function here. So the, the K is a, is a function of all these other variables, I may not have given you all the other variables, but the.
Okay, well, we need to do a better job than that of explaining this if we're going to say to people that their road doesn't meet the standard because of this math.
Yeah, but whoever's constructing the road is hopefully training in civil engineering and they, they understand.
No, I, I get that, but I think we need an English explanation of it as well. Right? I mean, maybe one of you guys gets it better that you can help explain it to me in English.
I could explain it in calculus terms, because that's what I see, I see the horizontal difference, distance between two derivative points on a curve. Was that accurate? Don't ask me to say that in plain English.
Well, I'm sure everybody who lives on roads will appreciate an explanation in calculus.
The road's too steep and hilly.
That's probably the best example.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Probably much like one of the recent ones paved over by Lakeview, correct?
Like Cooper Hill Road?
No, Lakeview probably doesn't meet the K-values, so.
So there are town roads that don't meet these values?
Of course.
Don't, let, let us just get through this, okay? Just, this, right now, just trying to make sure we have common, common, common understanding of the terms here, okay? All right, so it's some mythical calculation that has to do with how steep the road is, but.
Or how severe the crest of a hill is.
How severe the crest of the hill is, okay.
On both sides.
But in English language, we can't explain what like five crest curves and seventeen sag curves is, so that people like me who don't know calculus or engineering can understand why or why not something meets the standard.
And that's why we have a road agent, who can go out and explain it to people and go over with them.
Okay.
Hire a contractor, I don't think you're going to go out there on a tractor on Saturday morning and with this piece of paper and build yourself a road.
Well, that's not the point, that's not what I'm saying.
We're not building any roads.
Thank you.
That's not what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, if you're going to say.
We're not building anything, so it's.
What I'm saying is, if you say to somebody, your road doesn't meet the standard because of this calculus, that, or, that doesn't help explain the situation to anybody. That's all I'm saying.
Well, we, we use, these are, these are, they're beyond you and I, but they're industry standard terms that have, they're widely accepted, they're widely used, you see the, the planning board would use something like this, they would turn to their engineer and say, check this road for us, and the engineer for the planning board would talk to the engineer for the road developer, and they would talk in terms of K-values, and they'd all understand what they're trying to do. So that's, that's, that's your engineer saying this is what you ought to make the specification be.
I understand that.
Yeah, personally, I think for the, for this board to dive this deep into the math of it, I think we're getting too, too wrapped up in the weeds. I mean, we have a qualified opinion from our engineers. I, I don't think any of us are qualified to second guess it. And, and it's, you know, their job to answer those questions for us in layman's terms if the questions come up.
It's not layman's terms.
No, no, they could answer questions about this stuff in layman's terms as the need arose.
Okay.
We didn't ask them for a standard written in layman's terms, we just asked them for a standard, and they gave it to us.
Well, then maybe we need to ask for an explanation in layman's terms.
We could, but is that going to change any of this, any of what they've proposed?
I don't know.
I wouldn't think so.
We, we need to move forward here. Like you said, Tony, we're getting wrapped up in the, the small particulars here. If we go back and tell them to put it in layman's terms, are we not accepting them as a professional outfit to give us these standards to go by? You're second guessing them. They're the professionals, we're not, in regards to that aspect of building a road or upgrading a road.
I think we have a right to question things that we don't understand. You know, for example, if you go by.
We've been at this for a year now. Over a year. It's time to move forward. We have a, a former engineer in the room here, I think he did a very good job explaining it, to the point where I understand, Tony understands, gentlemen, do you understand?
To a point.
To a point. I think it's time to move forward now.
I don't know why, we just don't go, hey, the road says this road makes it, this road doesn't.
Exactly, thank you.
But this road needs to upgrade towards to make it. Instead of going back and forth with.
Yeah, we're wasting, we are wasting valuable time hagging this little stuff out.
Okay.
Trying to make a form for something that's been around for fifty-something years, that, sorry, didn't mean that slide off the table like that.
I did that last week.
The winter. You know, it's only ten miles of road we're talking about, overall. We already know the road, there's only seven or eight particular roads out of the ten miles that we're talking about. But we've already had a, Chris and Sean go down all the roads, they made marks on it, we originally had the sixteen, now we got a standard here saying where we should be up to eighteen, we already know that.
Okay.
We know some roads are already going to qualify because they're going to make it, because they are wide enough. So we, I mean, let's move this process along by going here and keep talking about.
Thank you.
Vertical curve Ks and longitude road grades for a road that's already established, you know?
Okay, so the message I've just gotten is that we don't have a right to, we're not going to question anything in here, so we might as well push it to vote. That's what I just heard.
I didn't hear anybody say that we didn't have a right to question anything, but how do you not trust the, the experts, the professionals who gave us what we asked for?
They're giving us a guide for us to look at upon each of these roads to help make an opinion whether they pass as a town road, not as we're building one. But here's a guide for what they're saying a town road should be.
Ideally.
Ideally. Because then we can vary from this too, if we have to. We have that right.
Did, did these questions come out of the, the gravel road proposal or the class five?
This is just me watching the last half hour of your meeting last week and hearing that somebody wanted to understand the technical terms better.
I did, I did find this online as well.
Yeah, I'm not claiming, that's all I did, but I, this is just an attempt to explain the technical terms, that's all. No specific question, no.
Right, right, but the, the values, the, you know, that, that triggered the question, was that part of the, the gravel road standard or the class five standard? I don't remember from last time.
What's the difference?
These, these terms come from the recommended gravel road standards developed by the engineers.
Right.
Not the class five road standards that we poached from New Hampshire DOT.
Right. Because theirs are much more stringent than that.
I have to look at them, I don't know that they.
It's not usually different.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not drastic.
The, they probably both refer to the same ASHTO standards, if they don't, like K-value may not show up in the state document that we gave you. I'm just looking at the. Yeah, I don't, the K-value one I don't happen to see in the state standard that we gave you, but I suspect they both refer back to the same source.
Right.
Science. And we can do more work to, to meld those two if you want, and, and I know you're juggling multiple standard things here, but.
I, I stand by my original statement, we need to come up with one standard, we need to move forward. I'm satisfied with the explanation of this here. It seems like the majority of the board is also satisfied in my, unless I'm misreading it. It's time to move forward.
Yeah, I know, I would agree.
Yeah, but do you want to recognize?
There's, oh, I'm sorry.
Is this an okay time to make a comment, come to the table?
Sure. If it's relevant, if it's relevant to the standards, yeah, yeah, yeah.
May I approach the bench?
Thank you.
You're not going to whip it back?
No.
So these are my written commentary, I kept it short and sweet. I reread most of A Hard Road to Travel. I did not make a copy for you, sorry.
Mike.
Oh, Mike, I'm sorry, sorry.
You know what, a number, a number of us have read this.
Okay.
We do read it.
All right.
So.
Can you share with us?
Sure, so.
It's a, it's a very thick book that he's referring to.
It's called A Hard Road to Travel, it's published by the New Hampshire Municipal Association, it's about two hundred pages. So basically, what I gave to them was a Reader's Digest condensed version, you read chapters one, two, five, and seven, right? That will help you with all the issues that you're wrangling with. Rereading it today, and so the other thing that's really good about the book is it, it gives you a historical content, context of road law from ancient times to present. It ties in with it legislative decisions, so it references specific RSAs, and also gives case law. So it blends all three together, so you get a really good roadmap, unattended, of, of what you've got to do, what your charge is, is select. And it's, and, and it's really in that planning board slash select board realm, right? For you guys, it's, it's tough, and it blends in with zoning as well. But I think you're laying a dangerous trap if you have two road standards. Basically, I read that over and over, if you don't have a specific road standard, anytime somebody takes you to court, you're going to be challenged. You need one road standard. It's just clear, case law. Because if you have two, somebody's always going to challenge, why do I have to do the harder one? So my recommendation is you, you go with the, the one that you've glommed from DOT. Some of those pieces of roads may never meet class five standards. There's other avenues, legal ways to do what you're trying to do without trying to make two road standards. I mean, it's a trap you're falling into, at least that's my opinion. So one road standard that fits everything for the town, then when you have a legal challenge, you have one standard, you have a leg standard. I don't know if you guys have done the background work, it sounds like you've had, in terms of looking at the road, the pieces of the roads that don't fit this. And it's also looks like it's a legal.
So here, I have a question for you, let's say we did, and again, this is a hypothetical, but we. Let's say we did, and again, this is a hypothetical, but we have enough of those conversations going on every other meeting. So what the hell, I'll throw it on there.
Yeah.
So there's a standard for a class five road. An existing town road that the town owns does not meet that standard. Can the town stop maintaining it and stop taking care of it because it doesn't meet the standards? Or we have to put all the money in to fix it?
That's at the discretion-
That's a legal question.
-of the select board and your road agent. And if there's a safety concern, have the police chief, the fire chief say, guys, you gotta do something about that piece of road. If they're okay with it, residents aren't complaining, then it's gonna flush. I mean, that's-
Oh, I know, I, oh, I'm-
That's as clear an answer as I could give you.
I'm not saying it's not, I'm just-
There's, there's no, you're protected from liability in the context of even if you have a standard and you have something that doesn't meet that standard, if you have a discretionary authority to say, we, we just can't fix that right now or whatever. In your legislative context, you can-
Do we have to go back to the beginning of why we're all sitting here talking about this thing? Is the fact of not maintaining emergency lanes, that's the reason why we're here. That's the reason why the standards go, that's the reason why we've been talking about this for over a year.
Actually, it started in 2011 with the master plan rewrite.
So we're talking about 20% of town revenue. I mean, we already know all the, all the numbers are out there. It shows what a financial, either way you wanna look at it. All the residents that are gonna be affected, you know, we're here to try to make the roads, or most of them, for the fact of getting away from being emergency lanes.
Correct.
All right?
Yep.
I got a question from Mike.
And there is a, there's a, we can't make them all towards a, like a brand new cul-de-sac road. So we're just trying to find that common ground of how we can make these roads, or most of them, never saying all of them, but take a lot of the emergency lane standard. That's what we're trying to take. That's what I'm trying to do.
That's what I thought your charge was.
But I mean, you, you, I think you can have roads designated as emergency lanes and you can still spend money on them.
Provided they meet the legal criteria.
Right, there's, and that's why chapter five, that's an important read. That's about emergency lanes. Specifically pages 81 and 88.
We got a, uh, law 231, something called 59A, emergency lanes. It has notwithstanding RSA 231, uh, something called 59, or any other provisions of the law. A town may raise inappropriate, uh, the selectmen may expand money to repair of any class six highway or private way which has been declared an emergency lane under paragraph two. Such repair may include removal of brush, repair of washouts or culverts, or any other work deemed necessary to render such passable by firefighting equipment and rescue of other emergency vehicles. And we've been doing that since 1995 when they passed the emergency lanes. Yeah. And there's a bunch of other stuff here too, but-
Right, but there need, there, there's also specific triggers for public benefit-
Sure.
Versus private benefit.
Sure, yeah.
Mike, didn't you say that to us other ways that they could do it besides passing road standards?
Correct. It look, it-
It'd elaborate a little bit.
I haven't reread every chapter in a week, but it looks like it is appropriate for the town, for those private roads to contract with the towns to do the maintenance.
Town of Raymond does that, with three of their roads.
Right. And then Town of Acton, Maine does it.
Yeah.
There's private firms and there's, and the town also maintains, but they charge.
Yeah, I talked to Raymond today actually, and we have one, one homeowner that agreed to their maintenance agreement and all the others haven't. So they're doing it on their own. But they said they, it's a very good deal, but I mean, I still don't think we even need to do that. I think we have really had the right to go ahead and we've been maintaining, I mean, we've been plowing the roads. And I think, uh, leaving them as emergency lanes is gonna be easier than, I just, I don't wanna leave anybody out except for one, and whoever has the locks and the gates and says private property, we shouldn't be plowing them at all. And I see that in the emergency lanes, the ones that are designated. I see we have one here. It's a gated community. They should be plowing on their own.
It's a business.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, uh, there's actually several roads that are marked private property or gated. Um, that's on our short list for elimination.
So if I can make a comment, I think, uh, he presented a good argument. I don't wanna caution the board that our attorneys had, did say, come up with one standard. And I reject the notion that we should go against what he says.
So which standard are you talking about? The one in front of us or the one we tabled last week?
We're on the EL standard. It's my understanding that when we came to an agreement, we tabled class five. So we are working on the EL to fill the holes that are in that policy.
Well, then we still would end up with two standards because we would have to go back to the other standard, right?
Let's concentrate on one thing at a time, Donna. This EL, that's the whole thing of why we're here to begin with.
So is it any questions for me or?
No. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks, Mike. I'm still concerned with, there's the whole piece where the emergency lanes are private property. We have no jurisdiction to impose a standard. We legally have no authority to impose a standard that they'd be required to follow.
Uh huh.
So-
There's a bunch of things that are different, not-
So we can spend, we can spend a lot of time coming up with a standard that, that's outside of our authority to impose.
So we have no legality to, to, to enforce a standard on those roads. Is that what you're saying? So we have no legality to maintain the-
Some of this, right, right. I mean, we have no, we have no-
You have to vote to take class five.
Obligation on one hand, we have no right to impose anything on the other hand because it's not the town. It's, you know, it's, it's, there's two sides of that coin, you know? Um, and then, you know, the other part is, you know, we can hash numbers and values and this and that, but to spend all this time to come up with a standard that most of these roads may not be, be able to meet anyways, right? Um, and then you add to that the fact that we don't have the authority to impose it anyways, and they don't have to abide by it. I, I think that we're just spinning our wheels needlessly.
And you just answered the question as far as continue to maintain them.
Can be a little more specific on that one? Is that being no?
That's what I'm getting.
I mean, the whole, we haven't been able to identify- We haven't been able to identify any public interest on, um, public benefit on any of these roads, uh, to date that would qualify them under the RSA.
So every-
There's that.
Every road that has a ramp that accesses the lake on any of these roads has a public interest.
Public to who?
To the fire department.
Well, but that's, that's-
Fire department has to access Tuckaway Lake, then they need one of those access-
That's not their only access to the lake. And to drive all the way down to those roads, they would have to drive by much, uh, much better and easily, more easily accessible points of ingress to the lake.
So if a guy falls through the ice in the middle of the lake and he's ice fishing or something happens, where is their most success? Does it go all the way around to the state park or go in from Fundy? Those are the only two accesses that they have.
Well, if it's the ice, they're gonna go out with a four wheeler or snowmobile or-
How are they gonna get on the water? How are they gonna get on the ice?
They could go down the, the road, the town beach road. They could go to any of the boat launches.
You've never accessed that area when there's no water.
There's, there's only one ramp that I recall that the fire department would have. It's right in the middle and it's right off your road.
True, but down the other way, there's other ramps that are accessible if needed.
Where?
If you-
Where is there one on Barter?
Go down Seaman's Point.
That's not Barter.
I wasn't talking about that. He didn't say it. I said all of them. Cause even at White Grove, you could use the end of the-
So at Seaman's Point, are you talking about the one that's between the two houses that goes straight down to the lake? That's private property.
Is it, it's just an access though? It's still private property that they're going over? The one that they're using as the emergency right now? If you wanna technically call it that?
Okay.
It's still the same.
Okay.
Are we discussing standards or are we discussing roads?
Well, we were just discussing-
Well, we, we got on the topic of a public benefit.
And that's a, a subject where you can go into many different directions on public benefit.
Yes.
So I feel that there, there's, I mean, you wanna hash it out, you can find public benefit for a purpose. But you can also look for a non, if you wanna do it the other way, because you don't wanna take care of the road, you can find a way to say it's not. It's a-
We're jump, we're jumping ahead. We said way back in December that at some point we would do road by road reviews.
Yeah, but you wanted to forego that in favor of coming up with a standard.
I never said not doing the road by-
You said we needed to-
We said we had to have a standard first in order to be able to review them against something. I never said not doing the review.
I didn't say not do the review, but-
You did. You just said, you just said forego.
No, forego, until we determine a standard. But what I'm worried about is that we are just spinning our wheels here trying to come up with a standard that, I mean, short of accepting all the emergency lanes as is, I don't think we're gonna be able to come up with a standard that would be acceptable.
On emergency lane, you mean?
That would be, yeah, that would be acceptable for, for those neighborhoods.
What do you mean?
I think we're spinning our wheels because we don't have the authority to impose that standard anyways. It's private property. The town has no jurisdiction.
I think it was in this document that I have here, I mean, it seems like if you go out there and say, we're gonna deem this an emergency lane, and if anybody, any butter or anyone on that property says no, then fine, you throw it out. But the other ones, they agree, we take care of them and that you can do maintenance and everything to them. And, uh, you know, the town's not liable either for any damage or anything like that. So, I mean, it's, see, I think it's the only way we're gonna do it. I mean, if we're gonna turn around now and say we don't have any emergency lanes, what the hell have we been doing plowing these roads for 50 plus years? I mean, I look at the public benefit. We got a lot of good people from our town that live out in them roads. If something happens to them, public benefit is get their help as soon as we can.
Right. The, the Hard Road to Travel book, from what I remember reading, points to public benefit, meaning something that benefits the town as a whole at a greater value than the immediate benefit to the residents on the road. And that's what we haven't been able to identify. What is a, what, you know, what exists on each of these roads that is more valuable to the town than the value of the maintenance that we're providing? Where is the town benefiting? The whole town?
Probably the money that's being generated from the people that live on the lake.
So Tony, you're saying you wanna skip the whole standard process and you wanna start doing the road by road review of town, of benefit?
So what's the benefit of a brand new cul-de-sac road that's put in? There is no benefit. Except that it meets the town road standard, but there is no benefit towards it. Prove to be a benefit on a brand new cul-de-sac.
But the, but the town hasn't taken-
Again, it's an argument to point that I'm just getting up to. I understand that when somebody's gonna say one thing, you know, I, I know, I'm just saying, that's when we have these benefit things, it frustrates me.
Well, like, like you were saying, when there's, when a new road's being developed, the town hasn't taken possession of it yet as a town road, there's no obligation for the town to spend tax dollars on maintaining it, right?
Well, we do, we plow it.
An unapproved road?
Sand it. But when we approve it, we will, when it goes to-
When it's approved, then it is a town road. And that's where it's appropriate. But, but on private property, you spending taxpayer money on private property? That's, that's why all these conditions are in the RSA as to public benefit, et cetera, et cetera. Because the idea is that, you know, the golden rule is you're not supposed to spend taxpayer money on private property, um, except in those narrow conditions spelled out in the RSA. And what we've seen to date, and we've also heard from our attorneys, that none of these roads qualify under the law. So that we've-
Whose fault is that?
What?
Whose fault is that, that they don't qualify under the law?
Call your congressman. It's not up to this board to write the RSA for the state of New Hampshire. If you wanna change the law, call your representative.
If you've been maintaining these roads for 50 years and put one inch of gravel, one inch of gravel on that road, on every road for 50 years, we would meet several of those standards, the base level of that. These roads haven't been maintained adequately for 50 years and you can't-
And that is the fault of the residents who live on that private property. If you have chosen not to maintain your roads because you want the town to, to, you want that, that expense to default to the town? You want the town to take care of your private property?
It is not my private property. The town has been maintaining an emergency lane for the benefit of the public.
I, I sort of know where he's going. I think it's basically, if you look at it, that, you know, all of the, all of the roads that have been accepted by the towns were all private property at one time. And so, so for you to be calling these private roads when they've been used as public roads for all these years, I think is a, is a, is not a solid classification.
They're, legally, they are private property. They do not belong to the town. They are not town roads. Period. Okay? Yes, the town has been maintaining them under the auspices of the emergency lane statute, but that statute also provides conditions for qualification. And it also provides that the town can revoke that maintenance at any time, that there is no legal obligation, right, of the town to maintain those roads. And it doesn't create the right for any of those residents to expect that maintenance or any liability. The town can't be liable for any damage either caused by maintenance done or maintenance not done. Read the whole statute. Read all the provisions of the whole statute, okay? And that's, and you'll see why this is such a difficult thing for us.
It's not a difficult thing for anybody. It's difficult for just a few handful of people. The $2 million plus dollars of tax revenue that comes from these roads, the town loves to take and goes for it and use it at their will and their residents did not provide a service for anything for them?
Can we move forward? We've debated all of this and said all of these same things 1,200 times. Who's got an idea on how to move forward? Somebody have a motion?
Road by road.
Somebody have a motion to make?
Let's recognize, Charlene. You got Charlene?
So in answer to your question, I do. You guys aren't gonna work this through. How are you doing it now? So you, to me, you'd either do it two ways. Either assign Chris the task to go rewrite the emergency lane policy, or you guys create a subcommittee to focus on it and bring it to the greater team. But you guys are stuck and you're running around in a circle. And way back in December of 2018, the intent of that board at that point in time was to rewrite the emergency lane policy. Not to eliminate any roads, not to stop any maintenance on the roads. No maintenance has stopped at this point in time. So, but it was to take what is pretty, a not well-written policy and tighten it up. And that's, that's all you guys should be talking about, is tightening up that policy. So putting in some standards, addressing the public benefit, which there is case law to help you. There's a lot of case law to help write a really good policy. There are other towns who have written policies that you could follow. So I think, you know, you're not gonna do it in this setting. And this setting doesn't work for it. You know, e- even in 2011, that board didn't write it. Liz Katuski wrote most of it and brought it to the board, and then the board tweaked it. But you guys are stuck in trying to, to write it, so that's, or you just leave it and walk away. And it's the 2011 policy, but you still- And it's the 2011 policy, but you still haven't addressed some of the underlying issues about policy.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to help.
Of course you are.
Thank you, Charlene. Thanks.
You had a gentleman had a question.
Come to the table. Come to the table. And give the secretary your name, who she knows.
Anthony, you mentioned something, the benefit of the community. The community derives approximately $2.5 million of their tax base from the roads that are... Okay? That's how the community does have a benefit. Okay? If they didn't have that $2.5 million for the roads that are classified six or however you want to classify them, the community is benefiting by that tax dollars that are coming in. If those tax dollars, and you said, "Cut the roads off," and they cut the taxes off, it'd be a big bump in this town, let me tell you. Okay? So I believe that the overall community does benefit. You said it doesn't. I feel it does for that reason. The tax dollars that are generated by these roads. You got 354 parcels out there. I don't know how many roads, 11, 12 roads, approximately. There's been improvements to these roads over the years that the town has put dollars into, just recently. What are you going to do? Say, "We didn't put those dollars in"? If you look down the road and somebody says, "I'm going to bring a lawsuit to the town," have you ever put any money into these roads? Yeah, we did recently. You made a commitment. You've got 354 parcels out there that people live in, that people expect something for their tax dollars. Expect safety and life-safety purposes out there. You expect the fire department to be able to respond? You expect the police department to be able to respond?
But following that logic, then that means that any homeowner, as soon as they start paying taxes, the town owes them road maintenance.
No. I'm not saying that they owe road maintenance. They have a lot of property. And in your town website, roads are maintained, okay, by the town. When I bought my property, the roads were maintained. I never knew this was a Class 6 road or a Class 5 road. It was always a road that was being maintained when I bought this property, okay? And I'm just one of, say, 354 people that are affected by this. Our contributions of taxes that go into the town's coffers, that is spent for the benefit of all the town. You know, talking to the school department, I'm talking to the highway department, I'm talking to all the departments, okay? Share something from those 354 parcels. Those 354 parcels are not being individually maintained and adequately maintained as are the parcels at town, because you're making those one separate issue. I don't think that one's separate. Can all these roads that will be brought to town standards? Never going to happen. Can you accept a standard that this gentleman just talked about that's within there? There is a standard. I grew up in many towns that had the same thing. We had ponds, we had things, planning woods, let homes be developed from campsites, bing, 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 and all of a sudden you get very expensive homes out there. That's not the purpose of expensive homes. The purpose is the life-safety of the people that are out there. They're residents of this community. We're all residents of this community. We all benefit by this community. We've got to look for the benefit of all the people in the community, not just the people that are on, quote, the town roads.
But that's how the law is structured.
I know that's how the law is structured. You've got to look at what the history is, what the town has done in the past. You've maintained these roads. You've allowed the roads to go from camps to cottages to full-blown homes, okay? Planning boards accepted that. All the town board of adjustments, every one of these boards in this town has accepted these changes to the table. It's growth. It's what happens with communities. You have to adjust for it, and you can't just say, "Okay, these 354 parcels?" No. We're going to treat them secondly. By state law, you could probably treat them secondly. You've got to think about the benefit of what those people contribute to your community.
Minimum work.
Is the ally of the community. Thank you.
Need minimum work, meaning?
I think Charlene's points are well-taken. And that she raises some good, valid comments about how far this board is going and what progress we're making, and going around in circles. So she laid out a couple options. So I'd like to make a motion that we leave the emergency lane policy as is and end this endless debate of whether or not to maintain the emergency lanes as they have been for 50 years.
What about tweaking?
I'm just saying leave it as is.
I'm in favor of tweaking it, and I would be in favor of handing it over to the town administrator to write the policy, because I don't think a committee is going to work. This argument's gone on for 50 years. It's time to put it to rest. I've heard from the folks that live on the lake, they very much are part of the community, just like anybody else on the other side. We owe it to them. We owe it to the rest of the community to come up with something.
I, you know, I've got to go with Don, because I don't know what we're going to tweak on it, but.
As I mentioned, we have.
There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'm seconding it.
I agree with it.
I don't.
I mean, now that you're looking at the 2011 policy, I don't know if that's ever been followed. Have we had the people out there working on the roads? I don't believe so. They're, the people that live there. We just did work in, actually in Raymond a couple of years ago, remember?
Yes.
I mean, it's a...
Which brought this argument up again?
Like, I thought, I heard Charlene say this should be redone, with, again, I think a lot of input from Chris. Is that what you said, Charlene?
Yeah, either a committee or Chris.
Chris is doing the research or whatever with the road agent, and again, coming up with, like I said, it says here, I mean, we can, there is a way that we can say we can spend money on emergency lanes. I just look at it, and again, I look at it in a bunch of different ways. I look at, like I said, someone moved into town into a new development, where they said, "That road, you guys got to pay for it." You don't get all the houses sold until you come to a town meeting, which we did. But then I saw another road here recently that the people didn't know. They didn't show up, and it was almost like it was funny. They didn't get approved, Strawberry Lane. Remember, they had to wait another year. I mean, shit like that, you know? It's not right, but it happened. But I mean, this year, when I look at it, I mean, the people that were tucked away, number one. I was lucky, and my kids get on the bus right out in front of my house. These guys are going to bring the kids here or wherever it is to get them. They already do above and beyond what any other resident in the town is asked to, and I want to help them out. I really do. Unless they have private property signs and gates and all that stuff, then they're on their own. Just my thought.
All right, well, we have a motion to...
I know you have a motion, but.
Go ahead.
So I threw my original three questions before you started tonight. Those three questions came out of, well, we all started, we started this generation of this fight after replacing a culvert in Raymond, and you said, "This can't go on. We got to, we got to do something about this. This is crazy. We're replacing culverts in Raymond." That's, that's what started this whole thing. And we, uh... The staff came, I've lost track of what month it was. Staff came, I wrote a report, and I said, "You had a public benefit problem. Do you want to deal with it or not? And you're not going to get to a consensus on that. The community's not going to get to a consensus on..." "You've got very clear guidance from your attorney on public benefit. Take it or leave it. You're not going to get there." You know, you can surrender that point if you wish. Just forget talking about it. The second question was, "Do private road owners bear any responsibility for maintenance?" And if, you know, are we going to do everything, or are people that maintain, that own the roads going to do anything or not? We have this hybrid of, some people do some things in other places that there's no, there's absolutely nothing done, and the only, the only entity that does anything is the town. So your policy doesn't speak to that. Your 2011 policy ignored the conditions that were in place at the time. The conditions that it says have to be there to designate a new emergency lane aren't met. And we said, question number two is, if the owners are going to bear any responsibility, what is that responsibility? And three, if the town is going to provide some maintenance, what level of maintenance is that? And we know what we've done historically, but when things get deteriorated so far that we have to replace culverts, is that a town thing? Is that a landowner thing? So those are the three questions. Public benefit. What's the private landowner responsibility? What's the town going to deliver on top of that? Those are the big three. Those have been the big three all along. And at some point in this, you said to the staff, "Go tweak the emergency lane policy. Tell us what you need." And we raised a bunch of safety concerns for the operators, and we came back to you and said, "We need it this wide." We need, you know, we gave you a draft of that, and we said, "This is what we think that emergency lane policy ought to be." And you said, "What does that really mean? Go out and survey the roads." So we went out and surveyed the roads and said, "This is how those, this is how your existing conditions face up against those proposed standards or proposed revisions to the 2011 policy." That was the summer of 2019, I think. And then you got a hold of the idea of betterment assessments and making these Class 5 roads and trying to find a way out. That's how you got to where you got to. But if you'd like to just forget the last four months and go back to the point of saying, "Here's your 2011 policy." This is what, this is where the problems with that policy are, and this isn't some of the things we think we can change and make it better. We can go back to that point. It ignores the public benefit question. That question is going to linger forever until you solve it, but that's fine. It's been there forever already. If you want to go back to that point, it's an easy point to pick up from. Bailing out now ensures that this is going to be front and center as soon as we have to replace another big culvert or as soon as something else goes wrong. You're not going to, it's not going away. So, sorry. End of speech. Continue with your motion.
I think for you, you got that all correct and in chronological order.
We've all lived it. So we have a motion. So, yeah, we have a motion in a second to, just to paraphrase, just drop the whole subject. Is that, is that accurate? We, how did you?
We'll still need guidance on what you want us to do on these emergency lanes. I'm going to keep coming back to you and saying, "Do you want us to do X, Y, and Z?" Unless you want to just give that to the staff and say, "Go figure it out."
Well, so we have a motion on the table. We can vote on that, and if somebody wants to present another motion that the board feels more comfortable with, then that's fine. But let's just make some motions and decisions and get moving.
So, but did I paraphrase correctly, just to?
Said, "My motion was to leave the emergency lane policy as is and end the debate of whether or not to maintain the emergency lanes as we have for 50 years." Like I said, if people aren't comfortable with that motion, you can vote against it, and we can, somebody else can propose another one.
Hey, my only thing is, if we vote on this, now what happens if it snows tomorrow night?
We're going to go follow the roads like normal?
Yeah.
Yeah, nothing will change.
Okay.
Nothing changes.
Nothing will change in that aspect.
So that means this board drops the subject, and we don't work on it anymore? You know, we're essentially kicking the can down the road for the next board or some other future board.
You know, again, we got to hold on to this, I know. My only problem is, I've never been in one of these hearings we've had where there's been hundreds of people saying, "Yeah, you're finally doing what we want you to do. You're not going to take care of these people anymore. It's their property. They're on their own." I've never seen that public outcry asking us not to do what we've been doing. I haven't seen it. See, there's been a few people. There's never been more. It's always been like we had the meeting over in the other room there. Nobody was there that night. I mean, it was all people that are looking for us to continue to do what we do.
With the larger-massed majority.
Right. So, I mean, that's my, whatever. I mean, I'd just assume, say, "Let's just keep doing what we've been doing," and then I guess throw all this stuff away.
But then you got the legality of it.
Yeah.
Is anybody challenging that legality?
Hasn't happened yet, but, you know, someone could. Why expose ourselves to that? Are we not tasked to look out for the betterment of the community? To include limiting our liability to any lawsuits?
What would the lawsuit, no, we're going to, that's a whole other.
Yes, we've gone through that.
Right. We didn't get anywhere with that one either, because it's all, everything was hypothetical.
I mean, that's what basically Raymond said, that they, you just said, "To hell with it. If someone brings a lawsuit against us, at least at the end of the lawsuit, we're going to know which way we have to go from now on." I mean, that's, but.
Short of solving the public benefit question, we're still going to need more policy-wise out of the board to know what we're supposed to do.
For the emergency lanes.
For the emergency lanes.
So you're saying, you're suggesting that the board would be in a better position if we focused solely on updating the emergency lane policy?
I am saying, don't just try to walk away from this. Because it's...
You need more.
We've got to have more guidance on what you expect of us. We, we make it up on the fly, what level of service we're providing out there, what, you know, what is the line of what we just go and deal with, and what do we come to you for? What do you, we need, we need more than just go do what you've been doing for 50 years. And we need to do something about some of the spots that are particularly unsafe. We're putting our people in places that... I don't, I don't, I don't want to overstate it, but we're putting our people in some tough places out there.
Really at risk.
And that's not going to change either unless you proactively do something. Bailing out is not going to get the board out of the issue. I totally understand your frustration and the inability to solve it globally, but...
I mean, if you want to go over the emergency lane standards and put, you know, revise them.
They've done all the legwork. We can...
Well, it's going to be a lot of discussion still on that.
Yeah.
Not going to be a...
But I don't want to get into a situation where we're sending them back out, when they've already done the legwork.
No, we already know the, I mean, if anybody on this board doesn't know the legwork from going out there, then shame on you.
Well, there's a motion. Should we vote?
Yeah, unless you want to withdraw it and adjust it to what Chris was suggesting.
I'll withdraw my motion. And I'll make a motion that the board focus on evaluating and updating the existing emergency lane policy.
I'll second that.
All right. Any more discussion?
Does that mean we get going on it tonight?
No.
Listen, a year, over a year has gone by. We at least need to come up with something tonight, walk away like we've accomplished something. Enough with this, round the table.
We're meeting again next week, aren't we?
So we're going to push it another week.
I'd like to make a suggestion.
I'd like to make a suggestion. And I'm gonna call on you. What if Donna and I got together, took all the information that Chris put together? If you want to do it, put together a proposal based on all the information that's been provided, based on the case law, based on the RSAs, and put something forward. Are you up for it?
Well, I know why you're doing this, 'cause Charl-, no, no, I know, I know, I understand. I understand. Yeah, I mean, Charlene and I, having served on the board together for quite a while, we're on opposite sides of this particular topic. But Charlene and I also have a track record of working together and reaching compromises. And- We, well, I don't-
Go on, please.
Which is why she's, she's proposing that.
Yeah.
But it's, it's at the will of the board. If the board wants me to do that, I'll do that. If they don't, then I won't.
We'll work with Chris and Sean.
Uh, it's fine.
I mean, the board still has a final say.
Right.
We're still gonna be able to, I mean, go through it.
Yeah, my God, yeah. It's just working on a draft.
Okay.
Because I'm sure I'm gonna have some opinions on a quid of it on there, and I wanna, you know-
Yeah.
Well, and, and what I would say is, re- review it and send any comments to Donna.
Okay. You're willing to do that?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, Charlene and I don't always agree, but we have respect for each other, so-
You work well together.
If it would help move that forward.
Says it right here. Says it right here, you can do it.
Do we need to vote on that? No. You fine with that, John?
Sure.
Tyler?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yes.
I'm good with it.
Okay, so, there was a motion that the board focus on the emergency lane policy. Now-
I would say this is consistent with that.
Well, the motion has to be accepted or not.
Yes, it does. So, we have a motion in a second to focus on updating and-
Who seconded it?
Tyler.
John did. Yes, to, to revise and update the existing emergency lane policy. Okay. So, let's vote on that. All in favor of focusing on revising the emergency lane policy alone? All in favor? Okay. Unanimous.
Now, here's the question.
We just to call more something.
When are you gonna get it done? No, I know you're busy, your schedule's busy.
No, I don't.
I mean, I'm for this happening, but it, we just, again, it's-
It's not gonna be tonight.
Obviously.
Um, I would-
Thank you, Charlene, for, I mean, we do appreciate.
Yeah. What's the date? It, I, I mean, I think you have to give us two weeks at least. Yeah, so I would have to say early January. Yeah, early to mid-January. And I know you want something faster, but-
Even that's tight, 'cause it's complex.
It's not that we want it faster, it's just, we've talked about it and talked about it. How much more talking do we need to do? Let's, it's time for action. That's what I'm, you know, trying to-
We have one meeting before Christmas, right?
Yep, and obviously, that isn't gonna happen where you guys, you and Charlene, you know, I get that.
Right.
What's our first meeting after Christmas, Chris? Is it the 30th, or are we, we are meeting the 30th?
Can I email with expert, with my own opinions?
Absolutely, everybody should email, email me whatever you think. And then Charlene and, and Chris and I will get some time together. I am gonna be out on the January 13th, I will not be here on that meeting.
So are we still meeting weekly?
I, I mean, I'm happy to do that, I just can't be here that day. But, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean-
You're still five weeks from then, you can tweak your meeting schedule.
Yeah.
At your next meeting if you want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Add a meeting.
Okay.
Whatever.
All right, let me talk, I'll talk to Charlene, and Charlene and I can talk about schedule.
Yeah, you have my, you have this person.
I believe so. I know where you live.
Someone about to have some questions. I have to answer the question. So after this discussion tonight, which we've just discussed, the 354 parcels that are on these cold emergency lanes will still maintain the same status that they have today. In other words, for life's safety, it'll be-
We haven't changed anything.
Haven't changed anything, so nothing has changed.
Nothing's changed.
What has been taking place in the past will continue.
Yes.
It's not a drunk dead date at this stage.
Nope, no, nothing has changed.
So everything remains the same?
Nothing has changed.
Nothing changes.
Nothing changes.
Thank you. No, I mean, I'm looking at the life safety for the 354 parcels of the lane. You have people on it.
Just went down.
Yes, yes. Because of fire, you can't dock that. Okay?
I can drive my car.
That's my concern.
Yep, nothing's changed. Fire trucks will still get through.
Nah, that's all right.
Did you have a question as well, or? Okay. All right. Now that we're done with that spot on the agenda, next item, 2019 budget.
I was packing up.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that, too.
All right, just, this is, this'll be quick. The, we're obviously coming up on year-end. It looks like we're gonna finish-
Thank you.
December with a, something in the neighborhood of 175, 200, 225,000 under budget. Give or take, still some wild cards. But the biggest things, biggest unknowns right now are the last pay requisition on Ledge Farm Road. That's in between the vendor and the engineer right now, so we're gonna, we're gonna finish with some room left over. You'll hear from me probably at your next meeting with some recommendations on encumbering some of those monies. Most of it related to Ledge Farm Road. Pulling, pulling costs into this year to make next year easier on Ledge Farm Road. Perhaps also the survey of the gravel pit and some smaller purchases that we can, that we can do to shrink the budget next year. Things that we'll end up doing either way. PC replacements and things like that. The, we'll have some better numbers on the, on Ledge Farm. We're gonna have to make a decision about major road projects and what do we do for Ledge Farm. We're still waiting on those numbers, so that's where we sit right now. The, the general theory with the encumbering is, it's work we know we're gonna do. It's like the top code of paving that we, we didn't do this year. The top code of paving on the other two roads we paved this year. They'd be the first things in line and next year's work anyway, so if we can, you know, accelerate that stuff. The flip side of that is maintaining as much flexibility for you as we can with things like the special appropriations out of the legislature. Those are, you know, one-time, there's one-time highway money left over from two years ago still. We're keeping that dry for you to use next year if you want. And next, well, next year's one-time appropriation will end up being revenue for the year, so we, we can just throw that in the budget. But that's just our thinking, and I wanted to let you know that's where we're gonna end up. We might be in a position to recommend a town meeting that we take something out of fund balance instead of raising it through taxation. You know, if we don't encumber too much, we end up putting a bunch back in the, in the fund balance. We'll, we'll see where that comes out at the end of December or so, but-
It's a stupid question.
Yeah.
Does every town call it a funded balance?
It's called, it's either the unassigned fund balance-
It's like a fun balance, like, oh, it's funny money.
It's, uh, it's, different accountants use different language. The unassigned fund balance is the, the formal term that I think our accountants use. Fund balance is, I think, pretty common.
Okay.
It's a little too much like fun balance.
It is.
We could try and rebrand it if you want.
No, I just, it doesn't matter to me, I was just bringing it up.
Yeah, you know, anything that, anything we don't spend that's appropriated in the operating budget reverts to the fund balance at year-end, so. That was, that's all I had on this year's budget, other than the grand totals. That's a conservative estimate at 175 to 200,000.
So it could be more.
Could be more.
Depending on revenues between, uh, the end of the year.
No, revenues don't come into that, it, it would be weather, timing of deliveries on things like fuel and sand and, uh, those would be the big ones. And then decisions that we make on what, you know, what kind of purchases and encumbrance we make at the end of the year. There's not a lot of variables left.
The, speaking of the, this past storm, how, how big a bite did that take out of our remaining, our, our snow clearing budget?
Uh, we're waiting for contractor invoices to look at it on a per-storm basis. We don't have those done yet and in yet. It was big, 'cause it was a long event. So, you know, I only look at it really town-wide, and town-wide, we're gonna be fine, so. Where we are relative to the, you know, the contracted plowing line item, I, I don't know. But we'll, I bet, I bet we'll spend, I bet that'll be a 15, $20,000 storm when it's all said and done.
Is that just above average?
Yeah, that was, 'cause it was so long.
Right.
Yeah.
What about the, the equipment breakdown? We had a bad transmission on a sander motor, if I remember?
Yep, sander's in the shop, we replay, we have a backup sander. So that's on board today. And the transmission got, it says it may not be the transmission, it may be cooling-related on the 350 pickup truck. That was out on the road for tests, the mechanic was on the road with it today testing it, so we don't know. That, so that's still down. The sander's getting repaired, it, there's a backup sander, so that's on board. And I think everything else is on the road.
Isn't there a blade?
Yeah, that's all, that's, that, we're through that. That's okay, that's back on the road.
Can I just ask, though, like, I know those guys work hard and everything, but how is it that we didn't know that there was a problem with the sander or with the blade before, if we were getting ready for winter?
Oh, no, these are, these are problems that materialize during the storm, they're, they've been over-
But those aren't things, that's not equipment that you can check in any form before the season comes to say, "Okay, are we in working order? Where might we have problems?"
Oh, yeah, they did, they, they did all that. They, they ran through, tested everything.
Function checks.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, run, they ran, they put sand in everything and ran every sander, and that's standard operating procedure for coming into winter. The transmission one, we don't, you know, don't know, we don't know what that is yet, so.
Chris, what was that, this is a money, say, what was it?
Uh, unspent operating budget funds for this year.
Okay. Is that all you had on budget? Okay. All right, we already did our appointments. Any action items for next time?
Keep moving forward.
Yeah, yeah. It would probably behoove us to review the existing emergency lane policy, study up.
Oh, yeah. Do we wanna, uh-
Good thanks.
Chris, do we wanna talk about the building over here, the electric?
The what? Oh, yeah, uh, have you got something?
Oh, I got air-
I've got a quote from an, from one electrician, but I'm, I'm waiting to hear from your guys, so.
Well, we know quote from us, I mean, but it's a, it'd be, I said, he needs to know, do we want it put into the network, which would be more work? Or can we just put the smokes and all that with like a horn?
No, it's gotta be monitored.
It's gotta be monitored by the fire department.
But we have an alarm company, we can, we can do that piece independent of the rest of the electricals.
Okay. Well, he'll, not this week, next week, the owner of air electric will come over and look at it, and then he'll pull the cordon.
Okay, we'll get, have him, have him get ready to give me a quote, 'cause I'm juggling-
Well, it's not gonna be, it's gonna be done for free.
It's gonna be done for free?
The electric, you have to get rid of the electrical, the stuff in the back room and all that. Shut the upstairs, upstairs off and just put in, you know, the right receptacles and all that around the building and some lights.
Okay. Great, uh, let's just make sure, let's just make sure we're-
We had the building inspector, we just wasn't sure then if it had to be tied into the network or it could be on its own, you know?
Okay.
But that part there, you might need to sub that part. Is he, from how you just described it, it sounded like he's gonna Band-Aid it in order to get it fixed? No, 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 you just, there, there's not a lot of work that needs to be done where we're gonna shut the upstairs off and all that. But there's, like, in the back rooms, there's exposed wires and all that. And it, and not, we're gonna kill that section and get rid of all of the wires and clean it up. Just so we can have, they could have meetings in there, or, that's what we want, right? Meetings and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah, we just need, we need to get back to where it can be arranged.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. But right now, the receptacles are coming like out of the wall, they, they're not even-
They're not recessed in like they're supposed to, right? Exactly, okay, I just wondered.
But you, just, we're on the same page.
I was like, oh.
You walked through with the building inspector, he knows what we're looking to do and, 'cause I don't wanna do this four times.
But he just wasn't, he wasn't sure then.
We'll take care of the alarm piece.
Yeah.
For next time, can we get that list of our goals for this year? We focus so much time on the roads.
Yes.
The ones that we made back in-
Did you get to a final list? I will-
Yep.
Yeah, I believe we did.
For community service.
I just wanna look at that again, because, like I said, we focused on the roads so much. I wanna touch on the rest of that stuff.
Three months left.
Yeah, with our last three months, yeah. So, all right, anything for non-public?
No.
No, all right, then I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Meeting's adjourned. All right, everybody.